All right. Good morning, everyone. Go ahead and call our committee of the whole meeting to order. And we have a full agenda today, Commissioners. I'm sure you're well aware. So we have a full agenda. I will be asking to go into closed session right after COW. And then we have Public Safety at 11:30, Legislative at 12:30, and then our evening meeting tonight at 7:00. All right. So let's get started. First on our agenda is a presentation by Truscott Rossman and the City of Grand Rapids about the City of Grand Rapids Strategic Communications Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So last September, you acknowledged that the City of Grand Rapids needed to do a better job of communicating. And so we brought in Truscott Rossman to help us with that. They conducted an audit and developed a strategic communication plan that they will be sharing with you today. There also was an audit. You guys received that audit in January. And with that, we will introduce, turn it over to Truscott Rossman.
Good morning. I'm glad to be here. I'm John Truscott, President of Truscott Rossman. And I'd like to start by thanking the work with Asante, with Eric DeLong, members of the Commission, in our audit and strategic planning process. And also to commend everybody sitting here on their foresight in really trying to dig into where are their shortcomings? How can we improve? How can we be better at communicating with our community? It really is not an easy task to say, hey, we need to look internally at ourselves and see what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong, and then try to fix that as well. This audit and strategic planning process was very in-depth, very comprehensive. I know with our team, there were a lot of late nights and weekends spent doing this. But we really have to thank city leadership and staff for their cooperation in giving us information. They were very forthcoming and very open and honest with us on this. We believe, as a strategic communications firm, the importance of strategic communications to the city and to the community. And make sure we're relaying information and concepts and just communicating, keeping people informed, is very, very important for the community that you serve. And we hope that this sets us on the right path. So I'd like to introduce our team before I turn it over to Amy to start off. I'll go kind of left to right. Chad Sarowski, who does our digital, and you'll hear from him. Trenae Thames, who's been involved really on the front end of our engagement with the city and very helpful. Amy LaFaber, who will begin and who led the process. And Tim Dye, who leads our Grand Rapids office. So it's a really in-depth and skilled team. We're really proud of the work that's been done, and we hope you see the value in it. Amy?
Thank you, John. Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for this opportunity. At the outset of our work in August of 2017, we met with executive leadership to determine the steps to take to improve the city's communications. And following that in September, we had a series of one-on-one meetings with five of the six city commissioners and Mayor Rosalynn Bliss. And those meetings helped us to identify communications challenges, priorities, expectations, goals, and deliverables for our work. The overarching goal that came out of these early discussions was simply to do a better job communicating with various publics: residents, businesses, community organizations, partners, and others who the city serves and who are vitally important to the city's success. Specifically, you wanted to effectively inform a diverse group of residents, businesses, community groups, and others about programs, issues, and initiatives that affect them, their families, their neighborhoods, and their businesses. But as you know, communications goes well beyond informing. It's relational. And it should lead to engagement, empowerment, and equity. So for example, communications should support the city's effort to build trust between the city and the community. It should build a shared vision for the city. It should build community ownership of city priorities, and it should build city ownership of community priorities. It should also help advance social and economic equity within the city. And finally, we recognize that the messages we send and the image we portray to the world outside of our community are critical to our continued growth and success and vibrancy. So we want to reach audiences outside the region with messages that attract visitors, talent, investment, partnerships, and business. Those goals helped define the deliverables for our work, and they were a comprehensive strategic communications audit, which we delivered in January, as well as the strategic communications plan which we are discussing today. I'll begin with an overview of what you'll find in the document. And along the way, I'll detail two sections. They include messaging and evaluation. Then each of us will come up and talk about some of the specific strategies and tactics that we've recommended. So the plan began with research. The audit constituted the research for the plan. So we provided a brief summary of that audit and the high-level findings within the plan. As my colleagues and I walk you through some of the strategies and tactics, we will call out some of the research that led to those recommendations. Next, we outline strategies and objectives. These are comprehensive, proactive, and integrated actions aimed at achieving your communications goals. We identified target audiences and broke them out into two major categories: local versus regional and national. Next, we propose messaging. And I'll pause here to talk a little bit about that key messaging platform. So the City of Grand Rapids motto, which appears on the seal behind you, is Motu Vijet, or "Strength and Activity." The seal also features a hand holding the scales of justice. That means that when the city acts, it is called to act justly, fairly, and equitably. Those visionary principles instruct the city to act together with the community for the good of all. These principles guided previous strategic initiatives, including the city's sustainability and transformation plans, as well as communities' area-specific plans and GR Forward. They continue to guide the city today. As Mayor Bliss aptly noted in her State of the City address on Thursday, "We'll achieve our goals when everyone is together at the table working towards solutions." So it's fitting that these principles also guide the city's strategic communications and its messaging. These overarching messages are clear and universally applicable to all that the city is and does as an organization. First, Grand Rapids is a vibrant, collaborative, and welcoming community. Our city's strength is rooted in the vision, collaboration, and action of our residents. And together with the community, we have the confidence to lead, the courage to change, and the vision to grow. In the plan, you'll find secondary messaging that elaborates on this theme and sample proof points that support it. Next, we identify messengers. And it's important to note that the roster of spokespersons should reflect the diversity within the city's staff and within our community. We then outline tactics and tools. Trenae, Tim, and Chad will go a little deeper there in a moment. And finally, monitoring and evaluation. In this section, we proposed benchmarks to be used to evaluate outcomes. But it's important to note that much of what the city aspires to accomplish is relational. The city has prioritized improvements in the way it communicates with the community in large part to better understand the community's needs, to increase trust, and to build stronger relationships. While we recommend measurables related to distributing information to the community, digital posts, and meeting attendance, it is difficult to quantify the strength of a relationship or to measure the value of trust. We suggest that when the team and the Office of Communications is in place, they work to establish baselines on the highest priority items. That concludes the overview. And now we'll outline a few of the recommended strategies and tactics. I'll start with the recommendation that was presented as part of the audit. And that is to establish and fully staff an Office of Communications led by a managing director. This recommendation is rooted in the research that found that the city's current communications functions are scattered throughout the organization rather than housed in a single focused office or department. Without strategic foundation or oversight, communications duties often lack coordination and are not as effective as they could be. Establishing an Office of Communications is foundational to the success of the plan. You've already started down this path with the appointment of an acting managing director. To staff the office, our recommendation includes realigning communications functions and positions that currently exist throughout the organization, namely a media relations manager, community relations team, graphic designer, and cable TV administrator, who also handles AV. Additionally, we're recommending that the city hire a digital media manager to oversee and guide digital strategy across all city departments and platforms. Importantly, this person would have lead responsibility for managing content strategy for the website, fully leveraging the power of this valuable communications tool and ensuring integration with other communications functions. Finally, staffing recommendations include a communications specialist to support digital graphic design and AV. We've also recommend that the city establish an interdepartmental communications task force to be led by the Managing Director of Communications. This task force would collaborate to determine priorities for external communications, add those priorities to a master content calendar, and relay information back to their respective teams. Now my colleagues will cover other strategies and tactics related to specific communications disciplines, including community relations, media relations, and digital. Trenae?
Thanks, Amy.
Good morning.
I wanted to take a minute to discuss the city's community relations. A key factor in your decision to hire Truscott Rossman was the desire to improve communications with the city. Recent events with the Grand Rapids Police Department and the minority community pointed a need to better communicate with residents. As part of our audit, we conducted 16 interviews with Grand Rapids Neighborhood Associations, corridor improvement districts, faith-based organizations, advocacy and community service groups, philanthropic, sorry about that, philanthropic leaders, and as well as a local government partner. And you'll see that in the slide presented above. During the course of those interviews, we identified a few strategies for the city to improve their community relations. And those include updating protocols to deliver clear, relevant, and timely information to the community groups, to continue to engage the voices of our city, including residents, neighborhoods, community organizations, as well as the business community in meaningful ways. And also to improve communication between the police department and the minority community, as well as the organizations that represent those marginalized communities. So we've presented nearly a dozen recommendations that are in the strategic plan that is in front of you. And we wanted to talk on a few that we feel are overarching and ideas that need to be represented. So first, as Amy mentioned, the city should establish a community relations team within the Office of Communications. Part of that recommendation includes moving members of the community engagement team from the planning department into the Office of Communications. The community relations team would be responsible for advancing strategies that support the initiatives of the city commission, the executive leaders, and other departments. When the current community engagement team is integrated into the Office of Communications, we recommend implementing tactics currently used by the Combined Engagement Plan, which was developed by the planning department and has proven to be very effective for the community and department.
Sorry, can I interrupt you just briefly? A Commissioner has a question.
Sorry to interrupt. You referenced the communications plan that's in front of us. I don't have a communications plan, and it wasn't in the packet.
It was emailed to us.
We have.
Oh, so I didn't print it. I have the report from the audit, but I don't have the plan.
That's the strategic communications plans. I'm sorry, that was the plan I was referring to.
I'm sorry?
The strategic communications plan, yes, that was the plan I was referring to. You do not have that?
Yeah, and I don't have that. So I need that.
I can.
Thank you.
Can we get some additional copies?
Yes, I will. Asante's on his way. We need to make copies.
Okay. Apologies.
Speaking of communication, I just felt like I needed what you were referencing.
No, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that to our attention. I apologize. Another tactic we wanted to address was issue management protocols. Last year, community issues surfaced that required the attention of community leaders, as well as residents of Grand Rapids. The Office of Communications can serve as a key source in providing information during these times. Protocols should be developed to quickly assess when there's an issue arising in the community and how best for the city to respond to that issue. This may include bringing together the Office of Communications, various executives, and departmental leaders to address said issues. It will also require careful monitoring on social media channels, as well as media engagement in order to provide accurate, timely information to residents, as well as addressing any misinformation that might arise. Also expanding or establishing new protocols to ensure community organizations receive relevant information in a timely fashion. One consistent comment we heard during the course of our interviews with these community organizations and neighborhood groups was a desire for more information that was relevant to the organizations and their constituents. Establishing protocols such as distributing monthly newsletter with a recap of the news of the month, as well as upcoming events, could be valuable to our residents. Also, working with the interdepartmental task force to identify issues of interest to the community would help the flow of relevant information to residents and community organizations as well. The city should also try to determine which of these news and announcements needs to be translated into Spanish for our community members that are Spanish-speaking and accommodate those requests when possible. We also know that the city and its department already conduct many outreach efforts in the communities. But there's still more room to strengthen those efforts. We suggest the Office of Communications should work with community centers in each ward and hold regular meetings where city representatives can discuss programs, services, and listen to the ideas and concerns of the residents. These meetings are especially important where community concerns are most pressing. Lastly, the Office of Communications should assist the neighborhood coordinator, I'm sorry, in developing a communications plan to support the Neighborhood Connectors program. I'm going to turn it over to Tim, who's going to address some strategies and tactics involving media relations. Thank you.
Thank you, Trenae, and good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I want to say thank you to all of you and the staff as well for helping us pull together the information for the audit. The city manager, DeLong, as well as Asante and Amy Snowbuckner have been extraordinarily helpful. But input from all of you has been extremely helpful as well. Media relations is a vital aspect of external communications. Our overall strategies in this area are in three areas: establishing protocols for proactive and responsive media relations, identifying messengers who can provide information to the media, and developing stronger relationships with local media outlets. But before I move on to the tactics that come out of those strategies, let me share with you some of the findings from our research. We looked at the volume of media reports generated from June to December last year that involve the City of Grand Rapids. The results are on your screen. On the left side, you'll see that 294 stories were generated from the distribution of 30 media releases by the city. Most were positive or neutral in overall tone, and about 27% included statements or comments from the city. Conversely, on the right side of the screen, you'll see that the media generated 566 reports that were not the result of information sent out by the city. Most of that coverage related to breaking news, crime news, and community issues. Most of the reports were negative in tone, and only 15% of those reports contained a comment from the city. The study shows that the city must approach media relations with a planned proactive strategy and a responsive strategy. By doing that, the city can increase the frequency of its messaging and media reports and improve the overall tone of the reports. Now, I would like to take a closer look at some of the recommended media relation strategies and tools. Again, in the interest of time, we will move through these recommendations quickly and answer your questions at the end of the presentation. One of the first things that we end up talking about in the media relations area is a calendar. The Office of Communications should develop a 60-day media relations planning calendar to ensure proactive content about city programs and initiatives is delivered at appropriate times to all media outlets. It will help ensure that the great stories and achievements of this city are being shared widely. Next, protocols. The Office of Communications should build on existing protocols for distributing information to the media for both proactive and responsive situations. Basically, how to prioritize what is sent out, what steps to follow when you're sending out the information, and what to do when the media is asking for a comment on an unplanned story. Additionally, the PIOs are something that should be considered in this. The city should develop specific communication goals for the police and fire PIOs. They end up appearing in a lot of media reports. This will help ensure that everyday media inquiries are handled in a timely manner and that information about the departmental programs that benefit the community are also getting out to the community. One of the big things that we believe you need to focus in on is media outreach and relationships. The city must be more intentional in its media outreach efforts. Sending news releases, media advisories, and statements is only part of the equation. The city should also foster an atmosphere of engagement with local media outlets, especially minority-owned and focused media outlets. This can be accomplished in a number of ways, including meeting with editorial boards, submitting guest columns, suggesting staff profile stories, or sharing city success stories and neighborhood enrichment stories. Being intentional with those ideas can help the community better understand what's going on and allow you to share the great work that is being done within the city. Additionally, the Office of Communications should conduct regular one-on-one background meetings with local media if they'll allow it. This will help the city understand the media's needs while improving the media's understandings of your key initiatives. When possible, members of the city's executive staff or elected officials can be part of those discussions. Another thing that is important in all of this is media training. The Office of Communications should arrange for media training for its designated messengers. The city is blessed with a great pool of potential spokespersons who reflect the diversity of our community. And it's important to support them with training and messaging and then allow them to share their experience in the media interviews. Another important item that needs to be considered here is crisis communications planning. The city should develop a crisis communications plan. The plan would identify which key city leaders are part of the crisis team and what protocols would be followed when a crisis begins. In today's digital world, 24/7, 365, it's vital to have a plan in place and follow it in order to deliver the most relevant information to your community, addressing the things that are happening as are happening and addressing any bits of misinformation that may exist, especially on some of the digital platforms. With those main points stated to you, I will now turn it over to my colleague Chad, and he will talk to you about the digital media aspect of our strategic plan.
Thanks, Tim. Good morning. So for the digital media audit, we analyzed the city's social media efforts both quantitatively and qualitatively over a period spanning six months. We'll start with quantitative. The table you see on the screens only captures the Facebook portion of our data analysis for the purposes of keeping this relatively quick. As you can see, we measured a number of metrics, including likes, which is how many people like your page, frequency, how many times you post per day, reach, how many folks saw your content each day, your engagement rate, the number of engaged users divided by reach, and response rate in time, the percentage of new messages you responded to in a day and the average time it took you to do so. For example, as you can see in the table, the City of Grand Rapids Police Department leads on several of the metrics we tracked, and they're highlighted in yellow for your reference, including likes, reach, engagement rate, and response rate. Additionally, the city's main Facebook page, also highlighted in yellow, had the best frequency at 2.77 posts per day. Our recommended goal is one to two posts per day. Next, the qualitative audit. Qualitative assessments simply ask the question of whether or not a certain quality exists, yes or no. We asked a number of questions, including, is there a comment policy? Are they removing links after they've attached? And are they using images that have limited text? Based on results, the City of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation Facebook page performed the best. In fact, the only no was something we found to be consistent throughout the social media accounts we audited, namely, the limitations of the old website made it easier to simply use images with a lot of text rather than linking back to the city's website for more information. Taken together, we used our findings to generate recommendations to help consolidate, coordinate, and streamline the city's digital media efforts. Our primary takeaway for the digital media audit was that the left hand needs to know what the right hand is doing so that they can work in concert with one another, something we found to be an issue throughout our audit. Part of this was due to how the old website was being used. Because the website couldn't easily be updated, we found that the city's social media accounts consistently posted screenshots or other low-quality images. The newly launched website will be critical to the city's overall communications effort as the digital clearinghouse for all relevant news, information, events, and functions like payments. Basically, it'll be an easier-to-use resource for the purposes of linking. Another aspect was a lack of overall coordination strategy. That's why we've recommended a digital media manager. As part of the Office of Communications, the digital media manager will be able to ensure the city's digital media efforts are in lockstep with the overall communication strategy and goals of the city, reflecting, promoting, and leveraging all of the traditional media efforts that will be ongoing. This person will provide coordination and oversight to all of the city's digital platforms, including the website and social media accounts. This person will also train departmental social media admins in established protocols and best practices. For example, we recommend using a tool like HootSuite so content generated by department admins can be reviewed and approved by the digital media manager, that is moderated, to ensure it follows best practices and branding standards before it's posted. A sample best practice would include using a high-quality image and linking back to the city's website if appropriate. Moreover, planned post content will be incorporated into the overall master calendar to ensure everyone is on the same page. HootSuite also makes it easier to track resident and media engagement with the city's social media accounts. Track posts can be flagged by the digital media manager and moved through the Office of Communications for further action, if necessary. The city also had a lot of disparate social media accounts, making it more difficult to implement a consistent social media strategy. We've included recommendations to streamline the city's social media efforts by consolidating the city's existing Facebook pages from 16 to 7. We're also recommending the development of an all-in-one mobile app that further enhances resident engagements with the city and goes beyond existing functionality. The app would include push alerts for things like public safety issues, as well as community event information, road construction alerts, bill payment, and voter information. And I just got to say, on a personal note, having driven from Detroit on a day like today, river and flood warnings. With that, I'll turn it over to Amy Snowbuckner.
Question?
Oh, yeah.
For the all-in-one app, which provides push notifications, how many other cities do that?
So cities of Grand Rapids size? It would be something that sets you apart. I don't know an exact number off the top of my head.
I'm familiar with larger cities that do it. I just didn't know, even in Michigan, I don't know how many other cities do that. I love the idea, but frankly.
Detroit has something that gets kind of close to that. They still have separate apps, but it does give you, it kind of combines the functionality of multiple apps.
And could that become a functionality of our current 3-1-1 app?
You know, our recommendation is to have an all-in-one app. And the value in that is kind of branding it so that in the minds of the end user, the residents of Grand Rapids, you can kind of mount a branding campaign that would encourage them to download it and have a better market share of the residents of the city. And people are more willing to download it if they see more functionality with it. So, you know, it probably could be incorporated into it, but I think it's important to talk about the additional functionality that would be added as part of this new recommendation.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Thanks, Chad, and thank you, Truscott Rossman, for your partnership in this work. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I stand here energized by your commitment to put improved communications at the top of your priority list. I also am very confident that with this integrated strategic communications plan that we can and we will improve our communications. And we can and we will improve our relationships with our community. The Office of Communication structure outlined in the strategic plan positions us well to communicate with our residents, our neighborhood, community, and business groups, our community partners, those who historically have been marginalized, and everyone in between in ways that meet their needs. This, I am confident, will build trust and will build a shared community vision. This is our story to tell, and it's our job to tell it. It's also our job to listen to our community and meet our community's needs. With this integrated communications plan and the right resources, we will reach our target audiences, we will engage community stakeholders in local government, and we will strengthen our efforts to ensure that this is a great place for everyone. And with that, we'll turn it over to questions.
All right. Commissioners, questions? Start down here. Commissioner Allen?
Not to be negative, but I find it hard to ask questions when I didn't have this. I had a time to read. I can't ask an informed question. I don't have the plan in front of me, so I really don't.
Yeah, it was. It was my understanding that it was emailed to all of you on Friday. Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that it was emailed to all of you on Friday. Was that not the case?
No, we got it.
We got it? Okay, then I apologize. I didn't.
But wait a second. It was emailed to us on Friday. Thursday is when we get our agendas. When we're, excuse my voice, Thursday, on one system is where we get the information for our meetings. That's the system many of us have outside employment. To get something on Friday hidden in an email that didn't clearly state "communications plan" is in here is actually offensive. And we've also had plenty of conversations about plans of this size, getting them electronically and not getting them hard copy. And you know who wants hard copy things and who doesn't. And I don't like getting information that we've had at the last minute. You've had time to digest it. I want time to digest it, too. So I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Allen, that it's really hard to weigh in. I think you all did a great job in explaining it at a high level, but I need time to read this.
Okay. I think that, Eric, do you wanna, you've been leading this effort.
Yeah, I think I will. So, Commissioner, I'm sorry. We did provide this in an email on Friday along with other information that review, that you review on a weekly basis. So that's kind of a, I thought that would be a good way for you to see it. I called it out twice in the letter, so it was there. But, you know, thank you for your reminder, and we'll make sure you get a hard copy in the future, and we'll get it to you sooner. It was also, I will also say that, you know, we had to complete the report and have it ready for distribution, and that took, you know, we were, you know, getting it ready even last week, so.
So it wasn't ready on Thursday, is that what you're saying? When everything else, because I think, going back to some of the earlier statements about transparency, what we're trying to, what we're exactly trying to do for this community, the reason we agreed to even do this is to be able to communicate effectively, and we've missed the mark with the report. This should have been available for the public to see as well.
Well, that's an interesting comment. You know, we, I thought it would be important for you to see it, and then we are making it available today.
And this is, just to be clear, this is a presentation on the work that's been done. It's not a decision point today. It's informational. Commissioner?
Let me follow up. First of all, I apologize, Eric. It was in the email, you're right. And I do read the email, but it just so happens, on Friday, I happened to be traveling. I was reading it on my phone, so you don't always open up something that's on my phone. I think this is just a word of advice when it comes to important communication pieces. This has been at the high point of every city commission this event. So I would just suggest, in the future, when we have something that's important, that a specific email go out with this when it's available. That's all I'm saying. It's just, it's a point of clarification. It's not that I don't read the weekly updates, but even in Greg's tenure, there was times where stuff was put out in the weekly update and it got missed, so.
No, that's, that's, that's good. And if, and if.
So I apologize for saying that we didn't get it, because we did get it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Maybe not in the form and the time. I would have wanted it, but we did get it.
And if, and if we need more time to follow up with questions, I think that's completely appropriate.
Will we have to pay for everybody to travel from Detroit over here again to have that discussion? Because I'd like to ask the question to the people who may have traveled from Detroit, and I know that costs money, but I didn't have the information in front of me to be able to ask intelligent questions to the people who are here. And I actually think it's even offensive to them that they've done all of this work, and it actually sounds pretty darn good. I've been nodding the whole time, but I don't have anything to be able to intelligently speak to what's in here.
Maybe I'll have them respond to that question, and I will see if other commissioners do have questions today and give them an opportunity to answer those. But I'll have, John, if you wanna respond?
Yeah, in terms of today, this was all part of the retainer. It's all-inclusive, so there's no additional fee for anybody to travel from Detroit or anywhere else. So we try to be as cost-effective as possible. We know that all of this is available as public information, so we also respect the city's finances as part of that. The audit was presented earlier, so you should have had that, and then this was the plan to take that audit information and move it forward. So just clarifying that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other commissioners have questions or comments?
Just, if I could, I just want to state that I'm very impressed with what was presented on today. I think that there is the need probably to process a little bit more. It is quite a bit, and I think that there's, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. It speaks to some of the more critical areas that, you know, are before us with regards to our relationships within media, how we are, are we being the most strategic with the work that we're doing on the digital platform? And most importantly, I think, the idea of just looking to develop greater opportunities to authentically communicate with the community. And so I think, again, from what I've heard and from what I've seen in the report on today, that there's an opportunity to build on all these things, and, yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction, so.
Well, coming from our commissioner, who is an expert in communication, that's very helpful. Others? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just wanna underscore that this is probably this body's number-one priority right now, having heard so often from our constituents that communication has been an issue. So I hope that the community is patient as we seek to further improve our website. We've taken a bold first step, and we'll continue to get feedback and work with residents to improve that. But it has been years that we've been talking about this, that we go on the site and we see PDFs and don't understand it. And with a press that doesn't come out every day, I think it's very frustrating for our residents to keep up with what's going on around this table and in this community. So we do feel an obligation to try to get that word out. And clearly, not everybody is going to use digital, but that is the wave of the future. So I feel like we're hitting this on all points that are necessary. It's just, again, we need to take a good look at this document and process it and then give you some more feedback. So thank you for your work so far. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So commissioners, we'll have time to read through it, and I know we have meetings coming up, but also work sessions, so I think we can do a couple of things, and Eric, I'll turn to you for thoughts.
So this is, was an introduction today. Happy to get it off the ground and get it out so we can start talking about it and move it forward. So we have work sessions on the 27th of February. We have a work session on the 27th of March. And so if you have a preference of one of those, let me know, and we'll put it on that agenda. So we can have a discussion, a work session format, which probably is a better format anyway, to have a fuller discussion, and that will help inform me as we move forward on budget preparation.
Yeah. No, I think that's a good idea. So commissioners, why don't you let myself or Eric know, or maybe email Eric and CC me, and let him know if you want this on the 27th of February or March?
March 27th for me, because I need time to digest it.
Okay. So let's, does everyone else agree?
Yeah, I agree. One thing that might be helpful, Eric, is if, as this is prepared further or developed further, if any of these have budget implications, it'd be good to know as we're discussing that, potential budget implications of some of this.
Okay. So we'll plan on March 27th, and then maybe Eric can connect with the Truscott team and see if some of you could come back on March 27th for our work session.
I'm sure that they'll be here.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks for being here. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
I am curious. The report that I have, that someone passed to me, is dated for February 14th, and it's the 20th, so I'm just trying to make sure that the version that I have is the version, because you were indicating that it was still being worked on last week, so I want to make sure that this date.
We may not have adjusted the date, but it was being worked on last.
And this is the correct one. This is the final. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure of that.
And Eric, maybe it would be helpful to put a hard copy in all of our boxes so that we have that as well.
We'll take care of that, too.
Not that we don't love trees, but it is, with, as Commissioner Lanier said, with a document this significant, it is nice to have a hard copy to look through and to write on, so. All right, anything else? All right, thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we'll get us to our action items before us, and we'll start with the resolution to approve the request for a temporary authorization for luck of the Irish, Waldron Public House at 58 Ionia for Irish on Ionia, the event on March 17th. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, so commissioners, I, this event has been going on for several years now, and so I don't know if any of you have any questions. I think all of us are familiar with it. Any, anything to add?
No, actually, like she said, it's in conjunction with the Irish on Ionia, you know, annual event. They haven't requested anything new. The location hasn't changed, so it's pretty standard.
Okay. And I know we have representation here from Barfly. Anything to add?
Year eight, so.
Year eight.
We're really excited.
Okay, great. All right, I'll call the question then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up, we'll take us to a resolution to approve the request for a temporary authorization for Donkey at 665 Wealthy Street for the Cinco de Mayo Street Party to be held on May 5th.
So moved.
Support.
All right, so Cinco de Mayo on Wealthy Street. Any questions about this? I think we're all familiar with this establishment and their margaritas. All right. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, and third, it was another resolution approving the request from Northern United Brewing, which is also Jolly Pumpkin, for a new microbrewer, small winemaker, and small distiller license to be located at 428 Bridge Street Northwest.
So moved. Support.
All right.
Amanda's out ill, so I will give you a brief update on this. This is a new liquor license application. They have gone through the vetting process. All departments, with the exception of the zoning department, has approved this at this time. So if it is something that the commission is comfortable approving, the request is that it is contingent upon getting the approval from the planning commission, and they are planning to meet on February 22nd.
Great. And my understanding is it's really a timing issue so that they can get in front of the state.
Correct.
Yeah. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up, we'll take us to a resolution adopting the, an agreement between the city and Ecliptic of Rosa Park Circle Conservancy.
So moved. Support.
All right, so we have a couple guests with us today. I'll let David kick us off, and then Cam Dunn is here to speak about this project. I know all of us have been briefed on this. Cam has been intricately involved in getting us to where we are today, so take it away.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. David Markward, Director of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation. You've got before you today a resolution adopting an agreement, really a term sheet for a new memorandum of agreement between the city and Ecliptic at Rosa Park Circle, a new conservancy organization that has been formed. As the mayor had mentioned, the Frye Foundation and partners came together in front of you in January for a special briefing and update on the work that has been taking place to date. And I'd like Cam to introduce and walk us through some of that. Cam is, of course, the Chair of DJRI Board of Advisors, among many other things, a key player also in beginning the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks Organization back in the day. So Cam, if you would walk us through.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Last month, you heard a presentation from Kathy Blaha about Ecliptic at Rosa Park Circle preserving a legacy. A 17-year-old downtown signature park with over 700,000 visitors a year. Commissioner Jones had that number stick in his mind, I understand. It's the most actively programmed public space in downtown. It's really our sort of central spot to gather. It's a success story for the city, but because of its heavy use, it's a signature park that needs a higher level of support to maintain and manage. So since that time, a working group has continued to work on setting up a parks conservancy for Ecliptic at Rosa Park Circle. A legal entity has been established, a nonprofit, that will bring individual and unique skills to partner with the city, particularly the City Parks Department, in managing our signature park. Board members are being recruited at this time. I just want to, conservancies are relatively new in our experience, although they're being widely used across the country to assist with parks management and development. But just as a reminder, conservancy is a private, nonprofit, park benefit organization. It does not own or hold easements on city park land. It can maximize the value generated for this important downtown public space. It will help the city by engaging experts to balance use with sustainability and preservation of the art, and it can help secure diverse funding to leverage city funds. So we want to let you know that progress is also being made on other fronts. We are working on goals and objectives for the startup of the conservancy and working on building a business plan. Revenue strategies will be part of that business plan. The next step is the term sheet for the memorandum of agreement, which you had in your packet. The term sheet is really important to a successful partnership between the city and the conservancy. It spells out who does what. As you know, it assures private donors that their investment in public property will be stewarded and sustained, and it assures the Parks Department that they have a direct hand in planning and policy oversight. This work has been done collaboratively and with intent to serve all. We commit to continue that spirit, as we say in the mission statement, to work collaboratively to preserve, protect, and advocate for the work of art and signature cultural park, Ecliptic at Rosa Park Circle, with community-inclusive programs and events that celebrate its hallmark of artistic spirit and civic courage for the benefit of all residents and visitors. So I thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Without questions, David's gonna wrap up.
Thank you, Cam. Just to be very brief about the term sheet, I will not walk through the term sheet one by one, but I think it's important to articulate, as Cam had mentioned, the city still owns, operates, maintains, and has final say in what happens at that park space, just like any other park in the City of Grand Rapids. This information did go in front of the Parks Advisory Board in January as an introductory item, much as it did to you and as a body in January. They have approved the general terms of this. They expressed some interest in ensuring, one, that they're continuing to be engaged, but, two, that we look at this opportunity, of course, as a way that we can maximize our opportunity in spreading our work to all neighborhood parks across the entire city. So that was an important part to them. I think this work will get us to that end, and I know that the board and the group that has been working together on these, on these terms are aware of that as well and working toward that same end. Generally, the terms look at the conservancy really intending to provide art management, program support, enhanced maintenance, asset and asset management for Rosa Park Circle. This is a great opportunity. It's, again, pointed out in the Parks Master Plan as one way in which we can maximize the work that we do in this, in this great community. So we'll take questions at this point.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you both, David and Cam, for your work on this, and it's very exciting that the Frye Foundation has been willing to step up and support this in the form of a conservancy. I did hear from a couple of people from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, so I'm glad that, David, you referenced this concern, because my question was, does the term sheet accommodate for the wider parks budget in the city? In other words, are we ensuring that the elliptics needs, ecliptics needs, excuse me, will be met, but not to the detriment of any neighborhood parks? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely. So the way in which this is being set up is that we will continue, as the city, to operate at the same levels that we have always been operating at this park. And there's a really important piece there, because the way in which the 2013 village language was written is that the city is held to a benchmark standard across all city parks, of which Rosa Parks, of course, is one. So to decrease any measure of maintenance that we're doing in that park would open us up as a city and expose us to decreasing levels in any other city park, and that is not a place that we wish to go. So we continue to maintain and operate as we are currently. The conservancy allows us to layer on to that additional maintenance that may be required as we begin to restore that park space, something that the city has, of course, will be challenged to do in layering on that extra maintenance in this space, thereby allowing us to continue what we're doing across the city. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other, Commissioner?
So I looked through here, maybe in there, but you talked about earned income as something to be discussed. When those activities happen, does that money go into the conservancy, or does it go to the city? Those revenue streams that are generated?
If I understand you correctly, you're referring to the fact that the conservancy itself might take on some activities that would generate income. In that case, the funds would go into the conservancy.
Into the conservancy?
Yes.
Kind of like as a fundraising effort, not so much as a revenue?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Others? All right, well, I am gonna add my thanks to all of you who've worked hard on this, and I just wanna also call out Steve Wilson. You've been such a key partner in our community on so many things, and I know that you have worked really hard on getting us to where we are today, so I want to just say thank So I want to just say thank you for your work. Also, we are so deeply grateful for the Frye Foundation, for all that they do in our community. This is an incredible asset in our city, and the fact that so many people are committed to making sure that it remains an asset for years to come, for the generations of the future, is really important. So, thank you. Please let all of the trustees know how much we appreciate what they do and all that they support in our community. So thank you. All right, with that, we'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to a resolution approving the selection of the Executive Director for the Downtown Development Authority.
So moved, support.
All right, and Cam, do you want to, is there someone here that's going to speak to this? I suppose I can, since I serve on the DDA, but I wasn't on the selection committee or the decision committee that brought this to the board. But this, so, I don't know, Cam, if you would just want to share a little bit, and then I can add?
Absolutely. As you just heard, I served as the Chair of the DGRI Board. I have served on the DDA for many years and chaired it for a period of time. I headed up the search committee that brought Chris Larson to town, and in concert with Brian Harris, the current Chair of the DDA Board, put together a committee of individuals to consider next steps when Chris Larson stunned us with his resignation. We looked at existing conditions in Grand Rapids where we are now. We looked at the potential for the future, where we needed to go, and after that, we looked around at what we had in place and found that our interim President of DGRI and Executive Director of the DDA was the person for the job. So I have to say, we concluded we had the right man at the right time, and so we have put that forward on behalf of the DDA for the Executive Director. He has now been hired as the President and CEO of DGRI.
And I will add, and we don't have to elaborate too much on this, I will add that there was community input in this process, and a number of folks who were contacted and provided feedback on where we are, but where we need to go, and that there was tremendous support for this decision. It was brought forward at the DGRI Advisory Committee. It was approved there, and then also brought forward at the DDA Board meeting, and it was approved there as well. And so because of process and how it's structured, how the DDA and DGRI is structured, the final approval for this decision needs to come before this body for support. So Tim, do you want to add anything?
I'll just add, thank you all for your consideration of this. We obviously at DGRI share a strong partnership with the city, and we look forward to carrying that forward in the years to come. Thanks again to Cam, as well as the other boards at DGRI who have already offered their support. It's been a humbling week, to say the least, but I'm excited about the work that's going on and look forward to carrying that forward in the future.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you for your work. All right, next up will take us to a resolution authorizing certain special events subject to Chapter 53 of the City Code.
So moved, support.
All right, so Commissioners, we have a vet here with us today. As you saw from the resolution, there are a number of upcoming events.
Absolutely. We are kicking off another exciting season here in the city of Grand Rapids with events, and this resolution is just our normal resolution when we have certain things that we would like to suspend.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you can now find all of the events on our website, so you can go there and see what's coming up. All right, next, there will be a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a closeout agreement with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
So moved, support.
All right, hello, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this item is to conclude the federally funded portion of the $1 million grant that the city received in 2010, which we added to in 2013 and 2017. So we received a total of one and three-quarter million dollars from the EPA, and we have put that all out into the community to support five projects, which are detailed in your agenda packet. We leveraged over $65 million in private investment, 265 affordable and market-rate housing units, and 271 jobs. The good news is that this money will revolve, so $1.1 million was put out in loans, and that will come back to us. So that will be administered pursuant to the agreement that is included in your packet between the city and the EPA. And the way this will work is that the funds will come back to the city and be provided to the Brownfield Authority to become part of its revolving loan program, which operates to assess and clean up contaminated properties in the city.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any questions? You saw in the packet a number of projects that were highlighted, all important projects here in the city. All right, seeing no questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Oh, Commissioner?
Just a quick comment related to communication. 163 market rate and 98 affordable, a lot of those are low-income housing tax credit projects. So, you know, when we talk about, when we're getting pressure about producing affordable housing, this is something we should be messaging loud and clear that we were responsible for leveraging that.
Agreed. We've actually talked about that just recently at the Brownfield Development Authority, talking about how do we do a better job of communicating not just the resources that we have, but the projects that we support, particularly around supporting affordable housing.
And if I might add, to piggyback on communication that Commissioner Allen just mentioned, that the price tag to do affordable housing is so high. And again, you know, we don't have the funds in our own general fund budget to do this without the support of the federal funds that come through the state.
Yeah, thank you. All right, anything else? Oh, we already called question, so those were just comments.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next up will take us to a resolution approving the terms and conditions necessary to complete the acquisition of 3.68 acres on the Grand River for future development of a public park. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, moved and supported.
So I'd like to invite Jono to explain the transaction. And when you're done, I'll amplify it.
All right, welcome back, Jono.
Thank you. So this is, I'm up here representing a team, obviously, of a lot of people that were involved in this project over many years. So this is the next step to move towards closing on the acquisition of 3.68 acres along the Grand River north of the highway on Monroe Avenue. The city was awarded a grant from the Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund in 2015. That was a seven-and-a-half million dollar, up to a seven-and-a-half million dollar grant to contribute to the acquisition of the parcels not owned by the city that comprise that future park. The city's match is twenty, required match is 25%, which was approximately estimated at $2.5 million. Excuse me, the city's match ultimately, after getting the appraisals approved by the DNR, the value of the city's property was determined to be $2.43 million, which will be the amount compensated to the Parking Services Fund for 555 Monroe, and that satisfies the city's match. The remainder of the properties are owned by Michigan State University and by Kent County, and the acquisition costs for those are $7.11 million, which will be funded by the DNR. MSU Board of Trustees has approved their portion of this transaction, and the Kent County Finance and Physical Resources Committee recommended that, their portion to their full board this morning. So, the evolving needs of all the partners, MSU and the county and the city, have evolved over the last two years as we've been working on this project and working towards close. So there's a more detailed land acquisition and swap that's required to complete this transaction. So what is proposed is that the city would acquire, again, the properties along the river for the park. MSU will acquire 520 Monroe, which is currently a county parking lot on the east side of Monroe, just north of the highway. That property is adjacent to a property already owned by MSU, and this will complete a larger site for their future use. The county will continue to use that property for parking for up to four years under an agreement with MSU. Should MSU notify the county that they need to vacate that property, the city will provide a four-year option for the county to acquire replacement property owned by the city in the North Monroe area. All the terms of this transaction are described in the attachment to your agenda item. Should the county exercise its option to acquire the replacement property owned by the city, then the city would enter into an agreement with the county to operate a service parking lot there. The county would use the property during the day. The property would be available for public parking nights and weekends and operated by the city. The county would be responsible for constructing the parking lot. The final step in this process will be an application of the Planning Commission for special land use approval. That will take place on March 8th, and that will be a necessary step to approve the construction of the parking lot on the county's replacement property in the downtown area. Ultimately, what we get is a signature large park on the Grand River, and also the property that's necessary to construct the river project. So this would, ultimately, this 3.6 acres on the river would be used to stage the construction of the river, which would begin next year, and then go through, obviously, a community planning process to develop the final plans for a signature park adjacent to the restored river. Finally, the city and the county and MSU obviously are good partners together, having reached this agreement, and we will continue to work together collaboratively to explore future partnerships to incentivize development, as well as parking in the downtown area, in North Monroe in particular.
Great. Thank you, Jono. I think it's really important also to note that the, this is over, it's $7.5 million MDNR Trust Fund grant that has allowed us to do this, to come together with our partners at the county and MSU, which is a significant investment by the state into our downtown and into our river. And so we're able to, because of this, leverage significant dollars, state dollars, to bring to our city. So Eric, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mary, yes, I do. And thank you, Jono, for a really good presentation. Jono's been a key member of the team, along with David Markward, Chris Barfus, Dick Went, Kim Dixon, who helped write the grant to get us in the ballpark, and all the work that it took to get here by MDNR, the Trust Fund, who have been good and faithful partners as we've moved through this. So, really pleased to be able to deliver this today, to be able to acquire this park that will be used for staging for construction, as Jono said, for the Whitewater project. And we have dollars allocated in the Transformation Fund for, not only for the acquisition, but also reserved for the initial development of what the park will become as, once we're done with the Whitewater project. Also, you should know that the Wink River Guidelines Project that's underway now has developed some very exciting concepts for this park that I think would be an awesome addition to our parks inventory, to Monroe North, to our downtown, and really to our region. So I think we're in pretty good shape here with this transaction. So thank you all for your support, too, as we move through this.
Thanks. I'll just add, I saw some of those initial renderings by Wink at a recent presentation, but I do think, just being really clear, and I said this at the meeting, that this, first, the acquisition needs to occur, but then the property will sit vacant, will be used as a staging ground. So this doesn't mean that we're going to have a park developed in the next three or five years. This is really a long-term vision, and when we get to a point where it's time to imagine what that space looks like, there will be another community process where people will be able to weigh in, and I'm sure DGRI will be actively involved with that, and Monroe, Monroe North. So, Commissioner?
Two things. Number one, just a really loud shout-out to everybody that was involved in this. I know well firsthand how hard it is sometimes just to do a simple buy-sell agreement between two parties. I cannot imagine the complexity that it took to pull this off, so. And the collaboration, which is amazing, because it's not just individuals, it's organizations that are led by boards that are, you know, so the timing of all this had to be right on. So great work by everybody. And second, it's just kind of, I just can't help but say, I really can't wait to see the day when we have similar collaboration and creative thinking around the city acquiring property to help support affordable housing in the, as Sidney and Linier calls, the A2P. So, just wanted to.
In partnership with the county.
In partnership with the county. I just wanted to get that out there, and maybe universities, who knows? Student housing.
Yep. All right, Commissioners, anything else?
Mayor, yeah, I just, I want to thank you, Jono, because I know how hard you worked on this to pull this all together. It's very complicated, and you did, and thank you also for presenting to the Monroe North Business Association. And I just want to underscore how this property is going to be at one of the prime locations to watch the river and the rapids, and that we heard loud and clear from the public that they wanted it to be public land. There were developers salivating over this space, but it's so important, I think, that the river, we have access for the public to our riverfront. So thank you for the work on it.
Agreed. Any final?
One more thing, too. We, our partners ought to be thanked as well. So Chuck Reed and everybody at MSU, and Mary Swanson, and everybody at the county were in the trenches with us, working this out, and performed very well.
And this went before MSU Board of Trustees, the county?
Right.
Yeah, and so all of that will hopefully be buttoned up, and then in front of the Planning Commission?
On the Planning Commission on March 8th.
On March 8th, so. All right, anything else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you again, Jono, for your work. All right, next up takes us to a resolution setting a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendments relative to the implementation of Housing Now, Recommendations 3, 6, 8, and 9.
So moved, support.
All right, Suzanne?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So, as you said, this would establish the 27th of March for the public hearing to consider these housing amendments. As you're well aware, we've been discussing extensive measures to advance affordable housing in the city since 2015. It started with the Great Housing Strategies work. At that time, in 2015 and 2016, there were zoning recommendations and modifications made to the ordinance, including reducing lot area requirements for two-family units, moving attached single-family requirements to Article 9 Use Regulations, which would allow the Planning Commission greater discretion in the approvals process, allowing the Planning Commission to waive the minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet for multifamily developments within traditional neighborhoods, and eliminating the 12-month ownership requirement for accessory dwelling units, as well as the addition of a micro-unit density bonus. So those were changes that were made after Great Housing Strategies. The Housing Advisory Committee convened and came up with 11 recommendations, four of which affect the zoning ordinance. Those are Items 3, 6, 8, and 9, which have to do with, number three is small-scale development. Number six was incentives for increased density. Number eight was to permit accessory dwelling units by right, and number nine was to permit non-condos, zero-lot-line housing. I'll go through each one of those, but first, I do want to mention, on October 23rd and November 2nd, planning staff hosted two input sessions on the Housing Advisory Committee recommendations, and I'd like to commend Kristen Turkelson and Landon Bartley on my staff for meeting with neighbors and hearing concerns, which mostly circled around density related to parking noise and overcrowding, and the lack of the city's capacity to enforce those complaints. On November 6th, planning staff hosted a housing developer meeting. We wanted to test the regulations that had been developed as part of the Housing Advisory Committee recommendations against what developer experiences were, and so we had feedback on that. And then on January 8th, 9th, and 10th, there were information meetings provided to the community to share what those recommendations were. I do want to note that they were not designed as engagement meetings where public input would influence what the text changes were. They were meant for information purposes, with the intent being that public comment would be given during public hearings, both at the Planning Commission and possibly City Commission. The, I don't know if you all have the attachment one. I did bring extra copies, if you didn't, that compared the side-by-side from the Planning Commission recommendations and City Commission.
Why don't you pass those out in case people don't have them in front of them?
Thank you.
I brought this along so that you could see both what the ordinance amendment recommendations were that were presented to you on January 25th of this year, and then what the Planning Commission recommendation was, so that you can see those differences. So I'm not going to go through every nuance of what the recommendations were, because we've already done that, but I did want to, want to go through, kind of, we've, actually, this was, it was on the public hearing, it was the January 25th, and then we've already gone through that with you, so I'm not going to cover all of those. But in the memo, as well as in this attachment, it does distinguish what the Planning Commission recommendations were. So both for the incentives for small-scale development, as well as general requirements for single-family homes, there is the reduction to reduce the unit width from 18 feet to 14 feet. There was no change to that. We also recommended eliminating the minimum lot area requirement of 20,000 square feet for multifamily residential developments, and there was no change to that. The biggest change in the case of where this occurs, where we would allow small-scale development, again, this is four units or less of multifamily development, it would be adjacent to commercial, all of our mixed-use commercial zone districts, so our TBA, TOD, TCC, or C-zone districts. The recommended language was 100 feet from those areas. The Planning Commission recommended changing that. The Planning Commission recommended changing that distance to 500 feet around those. We did provide the City Commission with those maps, and then we also have updated them with parcels, which has been available on the Planning Department website, and the neighborhoods have, we've had quite a few requests from neighborhood associations for that information, to understand what the difference between the 100 feet and the 500 feet would be. So that is one change that the Planning Commission recommended that was not included in your prior discussions. They also looked at, again, what that criteria would be, and the number of units stayed the same, of no more than four units per building. Do you have any questions on this one, on the Housing Advisory Committee recommendation, number three, incentives for small-scale development?
Not in particular to this, I just, I do want to make a suggestion and a request as we set the public hearing, as changes were made. Would there be a possibility that potentially one of our planning commissioners, who also served on the Affordable Housing Committee, could come and help describe why the plan, he feels the plan, he or she feels the Planning Commission made these recommendations and changes?
Commissioners, what do you think? I mean, I watched the Planning Commission meeting and read the minutes, but Commissioners, what do you, what do you all think?
I think that's a good idea.
For some of the public dialogue, I mean, as, you know.
The amount of attention this is getting, I think, and we're live-streaming now, and I just think it's good to get that out in the public.
And we do have a couple of planning commissioners who are also on the Affordable Housing Committee, who I think recommended some of these changes, and could speak to why the, why the Planning Commission made these recommendations, and help talk about that.
Yeah, and what form would that take? I mean.
I mean, I think similar to what, just be here for questions. Suzanne is doing now, but being able to, you know, describe it from the commission process, and why they recommended those changes, as well as be able to answer questions in the event that there are.
I do, you know, one of the things that we did with the earlier recommendations is that staff took notes and put out a Q&amp;A, which was really helpful. People loved having that, so that might be another outcome of that, that those questions and answers could be captured, and we could at least indicate where they came from as well, staff versus somebody from the Planning Commission.
I am fine with that. I think we can ask, I would think it would be the chair.
That would be Kyle Van Strine. He was not on the Housing Advisory Committee, though. The two members were Tim Kelly and Daryl Ross.
Okay.
And I had a conversation with Daryl, and he'd be willing to do that if that was the full of his body.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, because I know we've even had questions about their interpretation, or how they're responding to what the community is saying during their public hearing, so it would be good to have them here to kind of hear our questions directly.
All right.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I would also like to make a request, I've already asked staff about this, but I definitely want to make this public, that it would be helpful to have some data, maybe, I know you put together the maps and very much appreciate that, between the 100 feet and the 500 feet, and that neighborhoods and other groups have requested those, but if we could also get some data on households, income, age, poverty, rentals versus owners, density, so that we have a sense, again, in the 100-foot area, as well as the 500 feet, because a couple of the things we're hearing is, what data did we use, as well as, of course, people are wanting to, as you mentioned, wanting design guidelines, which haven't been developed yet, in additional time. So we're hearing all those from the neighbors, and as I look at it, you know, the maps are helpful in terms of the geographic area, but I think we need some data to have a better understanding of what's there currently, as we move forward with other decisions. So I'm, you know, very happy that we are setting a public hearing, there's been a whole lot of feedback from this. Zoning is complicated, so I understand why people are wanting more, more time to understand this, and we will have to make those decisions, but it's really important that we hear from the public first, and, you know, what their questions are, and try to answer those.
I think that would be helpful, especially, I know Kristin talked about this a little bit during the Planning Commission meeting, but it would be nice to have that data in front of us, so.
Is there any other data that you would like, as a commission?
I guess I don't know what all is available, but if we can get, you know, race, seniors, we're looking to become an age-friendly community, so I'm certainly interested in knowing who's living there now, in terms of age, income levels. I mentioned rental versus, or single-family versus multifamily versus commercial.
So it looks like there's some confused looks around this table. What I'm hearing Commissioner Kelly ask for is the parcels that are captured in that 100 feet versus 500, what are those properties? And are they currently affordable housing units? Are they currently, like, who is living there? Who potentially could be impacted by such a significant change? So that as, am I hearing you right, Commissioner?
Yes, right.
Okay.
So what we can do is, we can take, you may remember, we did the equity mapping when we did the Vital Streets Plan. We already have all that information in our geographic information system, so it's a relatively simple thing to take that data and put it into with parcel layers and that buffer around both the 100 and 500, so we could certainly do that.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
I think you might have answered my question. So you can actually drill down and get demographic data on specific households, on specific blocks?
It would be, depending on the type of data, it's either by block or block group, depending on the data. So once you get the more personal information, you can't, it's not by house on a block, but we can look.
That's why I have a confused look, because we're asking for data that I don't think you can get.
I think the 500-foot area is large enough that you can get a sense, certainly, we also have, the rental versus owner, we have the rental registration, so we do have that level, it's city data, not census data. For the census data, we have block group-level data that should be able to be captured, to give enough of a sense of what those demographics are.
Well, then, to balance data, I think statistical data about real estate in general in Grand Rapids, this is a, this, I understand the concern from the neighbors, because this is neighborhood-specific, but I mean, I just looked it up, right now, there's only 110 homes for sale in the entire city. 110 in the entire city. Go on GRAR and look them up. We have the lowest rental vacancy rate in the nation per capita. It's like, we've got a crisis, we need housing, it has to come from somewhere. So I, and I, so all I'm saying is, you know, what I, how I weigh this, and what I'm looking at, is are these reasonable and responsible ideas to produce more housing units, and are we, you know, so those, so just some of the data, just market data in general. I mean, that's, because it's, I realize there's a need to drill it down to neighborhood-specific, but it's also market-specific.
But, and Commissioner, I appreciate that. I think, I think, and what I'm hearing is concern about significant demolition of what's currently affordable, to build potentially something that isn't, when we don't have any affordability requirements. And so just, all of us have heard a lot of concerns from neighborhoods and the community, so I think the more information that we can request, and.
But Mayor, back to market-specific data, there are some economics at play here that make it literally economically impossible to tear something down and build something that we're talking about. It's literally economically impossible. There's no way, even the richest developer in the world couldn't make it work, because we're not allowing high-rises. There's a form-based code that limits the numbers here, so the sheer fact of, you can't make it work to pay a top-dollar, single-family house and tear it down and build a two-unit, those numbers just don't work.
Well, I don't know. I just, I think right now.
I can provide that data to a pro forma for that.
But I think right now, the question is, what, in leading up to, if we set a public hearing and leading up to that, what are, what's additional information we would like? Are there data points that some of the commissioners would like access to? Obviously, having a planning commissioner here was requested. So again, this is about questions or, that we may have, or data that we're looking for in addition to what's already been shared, and some of that could be in response to concerns that we're hearing from the community. So, Suzanne.
And I guess, from the data perspective, I'd like to request some data about, you know, what, in, within the 500-foot buffer, how many vacant lots exist? And if you can do that within the 100-foot buffer as well, I think that's an important differentiation to make, that if you, if we have this 100-foot buffer that was the start point, there's going to be, there's going to be a change potentially in the number of lots that could be done without having to tear anything down. I'd like some data about single-family housing starts in Grand Rapids in the last three years. I think there were 14 last year, if I'm not, if I'm quoting that correctly, but just to show that, again, as we talk about the affordability discussion, it's not just about rental, it's about ownership opportunity, and just how many single-family housing starts have happened in the city of Grand Rapids total?
Yes.
Not within the 500-foot, but total.
That's a good question.
I'd also like to understand how many applications have come before the Planning Commission for special land use for two and four units over the course of the last three years? I think that's an important data set to look at. But I also, but I also understand that, that just because they came to the Planning Commission, again, I think the barrier to entry is still the challenge. We don't know, there's data we don't know about how many people would have, because they don't want to go through that political process. So just, it's not a perfect data set, but it's a data set that will help inform this decision-making. And then if we can get some other data about the number of low-income housing tax credit projects that have started in the last three years, or have been verified or approved, like whatever, and how many units that is.
Yeah.
That's an important data set, to understand how many actual units are coming online, and those are really the only metrics we have to work from for affordable housing starts in Grand Rapids.
Yeah. I just looked at those numbers recently, but that would be good to have. And then following up on the conversation we had at least a month ago or two, before I went to the Planning Commission, I think maybe Commissioner Lanier brought this up. Help us understand the struggles with the special land use process. So I continue to hear this, I heard it again when I, when I read the minutes and watched the video, this special land use is too costly, the process is too significant. Again, if, and I said this last time, if there's an issue with a process or a cost, then that is a problem to be solved. And so I want to better understand what are the, what are the concrete difficulties? And quite frankly, is there state law saying that we have to do a certain process for special land use? What kind of flexibility do we have? Is there, if the issue truly is around cost, is there a solution there that we can find? So I personally want a better understanding of that, because even some of the comments I heard during the Planning Commission, it seemed inconsistent, in my opinion. Commissioner.
And I'll just add to that, and if it's tied to the requirements, so it's my understanding that developers would need to provide so many things in order to go through this process, and those things cost money to produce. And so even kind of to know what those things are, if they're renderings and things of that nature, and hiring an architect, or whatever it is, I think we need to have an understanding of why that's required, and the costs associated with having developers, and I'm sure that will be arranged, depending on the size of whatever the development is, but I think trying to get our arms around that, I think is essential for us to try and address some of the concerns, and at least I've heard, too.
Yeah. Yeah, and is there something preliminary that can be done with approval before somebody has to spend that kind of money?
That much money.
And that kind of detail? I just, I feel like that's a, that's a core issue we continue to hear and we need to better understand.
Yeah.
I was going right there, same place, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Repart and then Commissioner Kelly.
Suzanne, I just have one thing of clarification, and one piece of information that'd be helpful for me. In our packet, it says, "Design Guidelines Would Be Developed Prior to Adopting This", and then in yours, it says, "Form Standards". Is there a difference between design guidelines and form standards?
No.
Are those essentially the same thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And right, so right now, we don't currently have those.
We have what I would call a form-based code light, meaning that we do have regulations regarding percent transparency, building placement into the context of the neighborhood. So we have a base level of standards that was decided upon by the community during our pattern workbook phase, before we developed the zoning ordinance, and we asked, what's most important to regulate? And so we had kind of this bundle of things that the community felt were most important for form within our neighborhoods, and we have three neighborhood typologies, where the form standards are a little bit different for each one, so traditional neighborhood, mid-century neighborhood, and modern. The recommendation for more specific design guidelines provided to the Planning Commission was that if we're going to have things happen in the middle of blocks and adjacent to single-family homes, that probably need additional detail in our experience over the past decade, especially with residential infill, that we've had some really bad examples, where, you know, you might have somebody pick all mismatched windows, and it doesn't fit in the character of the neighborhood, and it's the cheapest thing to build, and so that's what they're building. Or some of the standards just aren't what the neighborhood would expect from a design standpoint, and so our position from the Planning Department is that we would recommend more detail for design guidelines if we're going to have more infill.
Okay. That's helpful clarification. And then my question is really, I think that it's important to spell out, how should we approve this? What that interaction looks like with the area-specific plans? Because those are all in different phases, and so it would almost be just helpful, plan by plan, to indicate how it would impact that plan or not, and what, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, and what, what has the most power going forward? So that would be helpful information for me to just have mapped out.
And we can, I can provide a little white paper on that, in general, an area-specific plan is a policy document. Zoning ordinance is law.
Right.
So if the ASP, even though you've adopted it as policy, it doesn't make, it does not trump the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is the highest level, because that's your, the legislation you've adopted.
This is exactly why Granville wanted the zoning changes, so that they could codify their ASP, because they were concerned.
Which we did with you to the zoo as well. We made the zoning changes, but.
Yeah. Not every ASP has done that.
Has done that.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah. Well, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this all started around the concerns around affordable housing. So in terms of the expense to developers, I am most concerned about those developers who want to develop affordable housing. So it might be something for us to consider, that we waive the fees, but not the process, the special land use process, when there will be an affordable housing component in a development. And then secondly, I don't know whether you can get this data, but to Commissioner O'Connor's comments about the financial viability, do we have examples of projects where houses were demolished in order to build? What I'm, what I'm hearing, and I'm not a developer, I'll admit that, but is that, you know, we are, we're having people coming in from the West Coast, the East Coast, where housing prices are a whole lot higher than they are here, and, and they do, it is financially feasible to purchase, you know, two or three lots, and I know we've run into that in the second ward, there was a developer that proposed, bought some houses, hoping to turn a church into a banquet and restaurant facility, and, you know, so I mean, that there, I think there are, there may be some financial benefits to purchasing property, taking it down, or holding on to it for a few years. So I just, I really wanted just to take a deep dive into that, because that is a huge concern that I'm hearing. And finally, I just want us to recognize that, that Commissioner Repart's questions about, you know, and comments about all the ASPs and so on, that this becomes what appears to me to look like a master planning process. And we have to keep in mind the capacity of our staff, and the fact that we are going to move forward with that, hopefully starting the end of 2019. I know we've got to raise money for it, but there are projects that are in the pipeline right now that are using up staff capacity, so just want to bear that in mind, that we want to continue to work on this, but that it does take time.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to indicate that I'm pleased that we're going to be moving forward with the, with the public hearing, although I don't expect to hear a whole lot of new insights when that process comes, and that's fine, because, I mean, this is the opportunity for the community to speak to the process. However, I think it's in our best interest to try to get our hands on as much data and information as possible, because I think right now, we're in a, we're just in a whirlwind of confusion. It's clear that we have camps that have been established in terms of those who are for and those who are against, and I tend to believe that the truth, or what's in the best interest of all, is somewhere in the middle. And so the opportunity to hear from residents is of significant importance, but I also think that we owe it to our constituents to really get a very firm understanding of what is in the best interest of all people. So whether it be the Planning Department's ability to provide us with the data that we're asking for around, you know, residents and housing types and things of that nature, but also, you know, I keep coming back to that understanding that. But also, you know, I keep coming back to that understanding that here we are, again, we're a legitimate medium-sized city and we're experiencing big-city problems, and there has to be a better way to get to a place in which we can accomplish what seems to be the Herculean task of doing a better job of providing affordable housing, while also, I think, committing to creating communities and neighborhoods that don't perpetuate, you know, low-income community in terms of, you know, the types of housing that's, and the socioeconomic status of those who live in those homes and in those neighborhoods. So I am, again, looking forward to the 27th of March for the public hearing, but I think that that's a nice amount of time between now and then for us to get our hands on some more information, and to also be very proactive in providing the same information to the community, so that they too can become better educated or informed on all that we're talking about. Because I think right now, it's, to some degree, it's piecemeal. And if we can find a way to just have better access to data and information, I think we'll be the better for it.
Yeah. Commissioner, I think we could talk about this at length, but today, it's really about setting the public hearing. I support scheduling a public hearing. I think what has been confusing to many people is if the public hearing is going to be on what was originally sent to the Planning Commission, or if it's going to be on the, what came from and was approved by the Planning Commission, and the changes that they made. So that is a question. Suzanne, I don't know if you want to speak to that, or maybe part of the public hearing can be information about both, and people can speak on both?
It's really up to the commission, whatever you would like to do. The Planning Commission made the recommendation. It's a recommendation, it's not a change. We did draft the ordinance based on what the Planning Commission said, because that is our typical practice. But you also have, we also have all of the language that was provided on January 25th. So we could demonstrate both. It might make it a little bit more confusing from a clerk's standpoint. We'll have to figure out how to word the public hearing notice. But we could do both, or you could pick one.
Okay. So Commissioner Lanier had her hand up, so I'm gonna go to Commissioner Lanier and then see if there's any thoughts about that, and then I'll call the question about moving forward with the public hearing, and then also ask you to get to Suzanne any other questions that you may have or information you may want before it comes back for a public hearing, if that's what this body decides. Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So what I've heard today is a lot of requests for a lot of information. And as much as I'm ready to hear from the public, in some ways, I feel as though maybe we need to pause on the public hearing until we digest the information that's been requested, because it potentially could change all of this, and then allow the public to weigh in to whatever the result is. So I just think there is a lot of information that's been requested, and I don't know how you, with an already confusing situation here, and then we have a lot of information that's been requested, how do you report all of that information at the same time trying to get people to weigh in? I think we need to slow down on the public hearing and maybe even change the date of that, so that, and then have another opportunity to talk through some of the pieces of data that's been requested. That's my thought.
I'll go to Commissioner O'Connor.
Yeah, well, and I respect your concern about that, but I mean, a public hearing's an input gathering session. They're not, we're not scheduling an action item for that same night, I don't assume, because it's not our typical process. So, I mean, I have no problem letting a public hearing happen based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission and hearing the concerns. And again, if we have to take more time to debate, discuss, modify, change, do whatever, I think we have the ability to do that afterwards, because, you know, again, it's not our typical process to take an action item following a public hearing, so. And I, I mean, and part of that emphasis is, again, we're gonna have a meeting tonight with Public Committee, and they're gonna be people that come and tell us they need affordable housing, they can't find a place to live. And so, you know, we get inundated that we're not doing things fast enough, we're not trying to address the problem, and this is one of the attempts to try to address that problem. And so slowing it down just feels like we're delaying.
Well, I want to clarify, we have done a number of things to try to have a positive impact on affordable housing. And secondly, I think the question that people have raised is, how do we know that these changes are actually going to result in affordable housing? And I think that is a question that needs, it's a very fair question. And so that needs to be a part of the conversation as well.
Can the data help to get to that answer? I guess, because we had two members who were on Housing Now, or yeah, Housing Now, were requesting data respectfully, you know, and so I just think.
And a lot of data.
Well, and I don't necessarily know if the data I'm requesting is for my own benefit, but I think it's helped, it's trying to use that data to help ensure the community understands that, what kind of situation we're sitting in.
Okay. I see.
Other commissioners, others? I have the public hearing on March 27th. Commissioner Lanier brought up the idea of maybe pushing it back. The question at hand is whether we schedule it for the 27th, which does provide what's the date today. I should know this. That's about five weeks. That would allow us to, if you haven't watched the public or the Planning Commission meeting yet, I encourage you to do so. It's different than reading the minutes. I read the minutes first, and then I watched it. I think it's informative. So between now and then, you may, if you have time, you may want to do that, and then also gather more information. I know I had a whole list of questions after I watched it. So, others, thoughts?
Well, I want to move ahead with the public hearing, but I think what we're speaking to is how incredibly complex this is, particularly around zoning. And we have a community that has all kinds of questions and misconceptions perhaps, and others who have a better understanding of it because they've been dealing with it for 20, 30 years. I think we need to hear from those folks. And again, to me, this is, this speaks to needing to do a very comprehensive, deep dive when it comes to zoning changes, and keep the focus on the fact that this is all about creating affordable housing and mixed income in particular. We have inherited from the past a lot of low-income housing that's concentrated. We want to move away from that. We can't undo what's already been done. But we can start to think about how this needs to look in our city to be, to Commissioner Jones's point, healthy for this entire community. So I think how this is going to unfold, I suspect, is that it's, we're not going to alleviate all the confusion, even by waiting for five weeks, but that we will get some insight. I have experienced, over my eight-years tenure, some amazing input from the indigenous communities who have weighed in on projects like Diamond Place, where the developers thought, "They don't know what they're doing, but we built it with model-sized blocks," and that, the architects and developers were stunned at the level of sophistication in the neighborhood. So they've made some really tough decisions, these neighborhood boards and other boards like Seats of Promise along the way. I think that we owe it to those groups to listen to them and to help those new people coming onboard, to be, to give them an opportunity to get some basics around planning and zoning too, because we've got a lot of new people with the neighborhood connectors coming onboard, and we have a lot of new organizers throughout the city, and that we need to stay on top of that so that people have the tools in the toolbox to even make good assessments about development.
Yeah. So Commissioner Allen and then O'Connor.
I don't want to belabor a point. Words matter. Language matters. Well, how we label things matters. So I'm not, I don't want to correct you, Mayor, but you said, "We need data on how this is going to increase affordable housing." But I would go back to, this started with the Great Housing Strategies in 2015, which was started by Commissioners Kelly, Lanier, and Lumpkins. And that group came up with four areas. One of them was land use and zoning, and need to look at land use and zoning and remove barriers for housing in general of all types. It even says that, "All types."
I have it pulled up in front of me, Commissioner.
I know you do. I know you do. And then, and then on top of that, then we went to your committee, which, you know, was not a closed group, was a very, all the meetings were open, it was an open group. They came up with actually over 20 recommendations, 11 priorities were chosen, and then out of those 11 priorities, four of them were around land use and zoning. So this is something that has been discussed and talked about for a very long time. And these are uncomfortable discussions, and I'm very happy to have uncomfortable discussions. We need to do that. But the crisis since 2015 has only gotten worse. So I just, I'm really glad to have the conversation. We've got five weeks. It's a conversation we need to keep having, but it's about housing in general, not just affordable housing. So it's, we need housing at all types right now. It's a very serious issue in the city. Because what's happening right now, and I'm, I can, I'll give you addresses, what's happening right now is, there was a reference to people moving from outside the area in the area. That is happening, but what's happening now is people are moving in the area and buying houses in neighborhoods where otherwise folks of affluent wouldn't live, and there are people being displaced. I mean, because there is no housing. If you gotta buy a house somewhere. So I just want to always say, affordable housing is important, but housing in general is also important. And that's really what you established the group to do, to talk about housing. It was called the Housing Advisory Committee, not the Affordable Housing Committee.
Well, and Commissioner, I think you're absolutely right, and it is a balance. And I think, I think that's exactly why we need an opportunity to hear from the community.
Thank you. I won't talk anymore.
Nope, you're, okay, as much as you want.
That's not the trick.
Commissioner O'Connor?
And I support everything that Commissioner Allen has said. It's about having a baseline of housing policy and then layering on affordable housing policy. And so land use is the core, it's the base. But I think the other thing is, I'm excited to hear from our community, but I'm also excited to hear from our affordable housing development providers, because a lot of the concern, the questions about this zoning changes, came as suggestions from them about ways that they can operate outside of the boom and bust cycle of the low-income housing tax credit. So I'm looking forward to our partners in the affordable housing development community to come and express their concerns. And I know our Planning Department has even asked several of them to step up and help explain these, and they were at many of the meetings, explaining how these tools could assist them to create units within. I know, does that mean that only affordable housing people get to access this? No, that's not how zoning code works, ladies and gentlemen. But what it does work is, it creates a framework which the people that do this kind of work can do better.
Well, I will say, I'm eager to hear from them. I'm also eager to hear from our neighbors. And I know some of us who have heard from our neighbors, they feel like they haven't really been heard. And that's unfortunate, because the great things that happen in the city is because of our residents and our neighborhoods who are really committed. And as so many people we've heard from, they want to be a part of the solution, they care about affordable housing too. And so giving them an opportunity to speak, I think, is important. So with that, I'm gonna call the question, since it sounds like we want to move forward with the public hearing on March 27th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
And just to clarify, you'd like the Planning Commission?
Yes.
I think we can invite the entire Planning Commission to attend the public hearing if they want to, but ask maybe Tim or Daryl if they'd be willing to speak.
Okay. And then from the public hearing notice standpoint, the 500 feet versus the 100 feet?
That's what was recommended.
Commissioner O'Connor wants the Planning Commission recommendations. Commissioners, any problem with that? Okay.
I have one more clarifying thing. So Suzanne and the planning staff and others on staff are going to be creating the information that you've requested. And so we have options for how that is delivered. Do we accumulate it all and put it on the Housing Now site, be it in one batch? Or do we put it, you know, as developed and let people know that it's coming? So, and is the Housing Now website the best place to put it? And, you know, so those are some questions. I'd like to give Suzanne some guidance on that. So we're meeting your interests and that regard as well.
Commissioners, thoughts on that? I think as you have the information to share it, and I think making sure it gets out, I see Stacy in the back, making sure it gets out to our neighborhood partners. There've been a number of neighborhood meetings over this past week about this, so I think as soon as they have information to share with residents and neighbors, I think that would be most helpful.
Thank you very much.
It's my opinion, so.
I think with the new city platform, the Housing Now site is a great.
Yeah.
To direct them to that. And if there's something that can be not static there that's updated, would be awesome.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
And then letting people know when that's updated, I think is important.
Right. I don't know.
All right. Suzanne, is that good? Is that direction clear?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, one last resolution before us, and then I'm gonna call the question about executive session. So last one is resolution setting a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance tax amendments relative to the sale of alcohol for off-premise consumption and other miscellaneous amendments.
I'm in support.
All right. So again, this is setting a public hearing. Suzanne, you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, there's, basically, some of this is clean up from when we adopted the zoning ordinance before. But then also, we had a lot of discussion about alcohol on November 14th, November 28th, and December 19th with the City Commission about the SDM and SDD licenses, with SDM, now beer and wine is for off-premise consumption, is allowed at gas stations, which was a change in the state law. And then MLCC has repealed their half-mile rule for packaged liquor sales. And so we went through an exercise where we discussed what potential regulations you'd like to see in place, where we could allow for administrative approvals, and what would be a special land use. The Planning Commission was provided with the information that you had developed. The three changes that they are recommending, one is that in regards to hours of operation, that closing midnight any day of the week, we had 11:00 p.m. during the weekdays and midnight during weekends, they're recommending midnight any day of the week. Second, that they add drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities to the proximity requirement, along with schools and churches, which is based off of the recent experience in the NICA neighborhood. And then lastly, they are recommending eliminating the concentration of licenses requirement in all sections. So there had been quite extensive discussion with the City Commission about concentration of uses, and the Planning Commission's recommending that you eliminate the concentration requirement. So the original language that you had was, "No more than two alcohol outlets, SDM or SDD accepting restaurants shall be within a half-mile of one another and shall not be located on the same street." Planning Commission has recommended that be stricken. So there was that change in these zoning amendments. The other, the other piece that is in here in response to Commissioner Lanier's request, when we're talking about the affordable housing, we discussed the four packages, just this last commission item. There was also suggestion for 28th Street, Plainfield, and Alpine avenues to have some changes to zoning to free it up a little bit more. That changes in this package. So we kept it separate from the Housing Now recommendations, but the Planning Commission, what we recommended to them was that we consider anything based on administrative review that we allow for a range of uses on those streets. The Planning Commission was amenable to that, but they felt more comfortable keeping it to housing, if that was the primary function. And so they're recommending that any group residential be added into that as permissible within those, within those streets, and so that language is proposed as well.
Good. Commissioner Lanier, did you have a question?
Actually, I did. No question at all?
All right. So in setting, setting the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendments relative to the sale of alcohol, does the same question apply then? Do we move forward with what the Planning Commission recommended?
It's up to you.
Commissioners.
Whatever you would like to do. The language as proposed is based off of the Planning Commission recommendation, so concentration is stricken from the proposed language.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with that. Not that.
Was it a unanimous decision?
What was that, Commissioner?
Was it a unanimous decision?
It was.
Yeah. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that either. I know that they can still go out for a special land use approval, right? For more than two?
Yeah, they would still have the option of coming, the big, the City Commission, you had recommended that the concentration requirement be even added to administrative approvals. So that was added in when it was presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission suggested removing that from the administrative approvals, as well as from the special land use consideration. So really what that started to do was set a threshold. When we did the concentration requirement under special land use, that is something that could be potentially waivable by the Planning Commission, but you could also, as the City Commission in your ordinance, say that they can't waive it. So that was a note that we had on, it's on page three of your memo, but that if you wanted to cap concentration, you could also do that, and it would require going to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Commissioner O'Connor, and then I'll hear from others.
I guess my only question is the process then. Then why did, why did we send this back to the Planning Commission? If we were just gonna debate this, like, we should've just debated this and made action on it. But if we send it to the Planning Commission asking for a recommendation, and then we're not even willing to take up the recommendation for discussion and debate, then why go through that process? We wasted a bunch of staff time, we wasted a bunch of Planning Commission's time on already filled-up agendas. It's a waste of process. If we wanted to debate it and come to a conclusion, we should've done that, and we could've been over with this by now. But instead... But instead, we just wasted a whole bunch of time to not even take up the debate of the body which we recommended that it go to.
Well, I respect your opinion, but I disagree. We have lots of boards and commissions that make recommendations and give us their insight. Sometimes we follow it, sometimes we don't. So, I, you know, I think there's, there's value in hearing from individuals that we appoint.
But the Planning Commission is, for all intents and purposes, a legislative body.
It's quasi-legislative.
They're not a, it's not the Parks Advisory Board. It's, they have decision-making authority in our community. So, it's a difference. It's not that, that argument doesn't work.
Commissioners, thoughts? Others? We can, we can have the public hearing for what was recommended by the Planning Commission, and then after that, we can make a decision whether to accept those recommendations or not, or make amendments to them. That is, we have the power as the elected body to do that.
Absolutely. Yeah, so, I'm new to this, so I just want to make sure I understand, because, I mean, I'm in favor of debating what they're putting in front of us.
Yeah, for sure.
But then, I want to make sure that we have the ability then to trump that, or overstep that as a group here. And if that's the case, then let's, let's debate what they, what they're putting forth to us.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, other thoughts?
But then, we gotta be ready then to come to that decision together. We're gonna have to do that at some point. I've only been up here for a little while, we've already talked about this four times.
You're doing to find it out.
Right.
And really, that is, that is why we're scheduling a public hearing, so that people can weigh in from the recommendations made from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Jones, did you have any thoughts on this?
No, I'm of the opinion that it all needs to come before us. And as my colleague, Commissioner Repert, has mentioned, there's the opportunity to debate it then, and yeah, make the decision once we hear from all, all parties, so it's fine.
All right. So, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Wait, what's the date again? I couldn't-
March 27th.
March 27th.
Oh, that's gonna be-
Safe day, busy day.
We're gonna have a fun day that day. So, so commissioners, couple things. We have a couple executive sessions, and we also have public safety that starts in six minutes, technically almost five minutes. So, I'm gonna ask you to look at your calendars and see if you all are available to go into executive session at 2:30, which would be a half an hour before our quarterly performance review with our city attorney. And then, we have one after that with our city treasurer, which are also requested to be in closed session. So, if you can look at your calendars real quick. City Attorney, can I do that?
You're putting the other one at 2:30.
Yeah, can we do, can we do the executive session for legal opinion at 2:30?
That's fine.
Today, and then we'll do performance reviews at 3:00 and 4:00?
Is it possible to do it earlier than 2:30, just for the sake of discussion?
Uh, 2:00? Do you want to do it? Does that work?
It gives us an hour between then and-
Yeah.
We'll take that in half an hour real quick.
Okay. So, does 2:00 work, commissioners?
Yep.
Okay.